Because Thursday is Veterans Day, I'd like to instead read from a poem. "In Flanders Field, the poppies grow between the crosses, row on row that mark our place. And in the sky the larks bravely sing, fly scarcely heard among the guns below. We are the dead; short days ago we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow. Loved, we're loved, and now we lie in Flanders Field. Take up our quarrel with the foe; to you, the falling hands, we throw the torch. The torch is yours to hold on high; if you break faith with us, we shall not sleep. We shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders Field." Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Water Infrastructure Investment Act. Just to be stating it for the record, we're doing a special conference prior to the regular business meeting, and this is the first item on there, and I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President. The Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant application is a joint application between the city and the county. As council members well know, the city still operates the water treatment plant, and the county funds those operations as the three separate water agreements we entered into with the county in 2019. Previous to that, we had been in these similar agreements since 2001. We have, through the help of GHD, or engineering firm, identified projects that need to happen at the plant, and they're outlined above, including filter media replacement, lift pump, precipitator, replacement and rebuild, and a lime feeder and feric system. So if we're going to continue to be able to maintain the water plant, these projects need to be done. This grant allows us to apply for the full amount of the projects, and the goal is to receive the grant and do the projects. However, as far as I'm aware, the county committed, no matter what, they will be moving forward with the projects. Councilmember Jankowski joined myself and all of the legislators at a water plant tour a few weeks ago to see the operations and to better understand the projects. So this would give us permission to apply. The second, if you don't mind, I'll go into the second resolution as well. That's to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Genesee County. That allows us to apply and kind of outlines the parameters of the grant and then how we will seek reimbursement for payments on a quarterly basis.
Any questions or concerns? I toured that plant, and replacing the filter media, it's like concrete. They have to jackhammer it out and be very delicate about it. A lot of these items are way beyond their service life, so, and the county is really enthused about, you know, getting it repaired so it can last another several years so they can get the rest of their project going. So I think it's really important we support that. We're in this with them, and I think it's important that we help them get this grant and do whatever we can to get that thing repaired as quickly as possible. Any questions or concerns? So we're in favor of moving this to tonight's business meeting for an official vote?
Yes.
Okay, that gets carried over. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Vealy? And seconded by Mr. Byakowski? If you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Vealy?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canale?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski? Yes. Okay, now called to order the regular business meeting. You've received the copy of the October 2021 minutes. Had a chance to look them over. Any questions, concerns, omissions, additions you'd like to make on those? Okay, I see nothing, so I guess we're all approved those minutes at this time?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. You also received the copy of the September 2021 financials. Any questions or concerns on those? Go ahead, Bob.
Part two, page four. Going down, general fund, general government service, city manager. Says we use 269% of the budget.
Correct. So we entered into a contract with E3 Communications for PR and communications assistance for the police department reform and new police station. Inside the manager's budget, I knew there'd be room to have this expense. That's just the line it needed to be booked to.
Okay, and then over on the next page, page five. General funds on the fourth inch area.
Correct. There's an encumbrance there for $80,000 that's actually incorrect. When we make our six-month budget correction or amendments tonight, you're going to see funds coming from the hundred salary line to here, and actually, it's only $40,000 because $20,000 will actually be booked to the water fund and the wastewater fund for the engineering services that Lobella is providing for us in absence of a public works director. So in the next financials, you should see the encumbrance change to $40,000.
Okay, and then just go down to...
And it still will be over, but with our budget amendments, it'll actually fix this, so it should look back in line.
And then go down to...
Public works inspection.
Got it.
The new inspection software. We didn't believe we were getting billed immediately, but we were as we launched it and took it online, so we had not budgeted for that. However, inside that department, we believe there'll be room to absorb that cost, so we didn't recommend a six-month budget transfer at this time.
Okay, and then go down to which one?
I didn't have... My next one's on the next page.
No, same page, go down to the bottom. Did the K-9 dog go on vacation for a weekend, or...
So the budget was adopted at $950, and expenses, I'm guessing, Alashon, but probably veterinary services?
Veterinary services will be an adjustment at the end of the year for the donation.
Okay.
And again, the donations, just from the most recent campaign, the national ride came in over $10,000.
I think we raised $7,500.
Well, if any of us could do that for ourselves.
So we don't budget that, but we do have the funds to expend to keep the K-9 program going.
Oh, I mean, to me, it's great. I'm all in favor of it, so, okay.
I have an answer to your question on the last meeting. You asked about the revenue on the mall fund. When we budgeted, we looked back at the contract before we billed, and the cost per square foot went up to...
$203.
It went from $2 to $203 or $204 per square foot. So the revenue, we billed correctly, we budgeted incorrectly. So this year, when we look at the budget, we'll make sure we budget correctly, and that's why it was higher.
And I've said it a million times, I'd still like to see the city sell the properties they're sitting on in the mall, and I think we've owned them for way too long, so, thank you. Thanks, Rachel.
Anything else? So we now approve the September 2021 financials? Okay. Agenda items, item 81, 2021, the fees for the City of Batavia fee schedule. Bob Byakowski? 82, 2021, the agreement with Town of Batavia for the streetlight. Mr. Canale. 83, 2021, the Town of Batavia for the traffic control device. Ms. Christian. 84, 2021, the prosecutorial services with Genesee County. Mr. McGinnis. 85, 2021, the budget transfer amendment for the contingency and reserve accounts. Ms. Pacino. 86, 2021, public works vehicle disposal. Mr. Vealy. 87, 2021, the Grove Roofing Services for the Police Department. Mr. Canale. 88, 2021, the Water Infrastructure Improvement, the one of the items we moved over from the special conference. Mr. Vealy. And 89, 2021, the other part of the infrastructure agreement. Any communications? The regular, or the next city council conference meeting will be held Monday, November 22, 7:00 PM, at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Also, I'd like to add, last meeting, we had the proclamation for the Genesee Symphony Orchestra. I attended the concert Saturday. I was totally blown away. It was amazing, and it's amazing to see a large group of people like that, all with different instruments, all from different backgrounds, working together, perfect timing, making amazing music. I was totally impressed. So if you've never seen it, you should go, and that's where it keeps them going, their donations, and that helps them function, and it was an amazing day, and I wish I'd have done it much sooner. So I will be a regular visitor of the orchestra from now on. So I just wanted to let you guys know that if you have a chance, please go. You'll really, really be impressed.
I didn't realize you were that culture.
I am not.
Where you come from?
I wasn't, but I am not.
Let's go out now.
I am not. I wish I could play a violin like that. It's amazing to watch, and all the work that they must put into it to get to that level. It's not something that's happened overnight.
They have always been, for a small community orchestra, symphony, they've always been incredible.
We're blessed that we even have that here. For our county to have something like that, I would expect that in a much larger city, in a much larger county, I would expect that there, but not here, and we're lucky to have it. I think it's, more people should take advantage of it. City attorneys report?
Yes, Council President, nothing specific to report.
Okay, thank you. City managers report?
Yep, just a few items. I met with the department heads today and wanted to give you an update on a few things. We've been doing work at the ice rink this year. The front doors have now been replaced. The compressor that was approved last meeting or two meetings ago is scheduled to replace mid to next week. Dwyer Stadium and the parks have been winterized. The city center roof project is slated to start up again on November 15, so we're hoping this is the last time. We now have the materials and the labor, and they can finish up the project. The Jackson Square construction bids will be open this Friday morning at City Hall, so you'll see the bid award at the next meeting so we can move forward with that project. Leaf collection ends in the fourth week of November, so all of the equipment can be changed over for winter operations. We do, however, in the case of a surprise storm, have several trucks ready to go. Summit Lubricants donated 15 trees, which have been planted on and around Union Street, so thank you very much to Summit Lubricants for donating trees. The Police Department has just finished up with multiple training sessions, including defensive tactics and de-escalation. They're currently waiting on the results of the most recent civil service exam because there are three open positions that need to be hired for at this time in the Police Department. The review of the architect and engineering firms is underway for the design of the new police station, and at the next meeting, you'll be presented with a resolution to request authorization of the issuance of a bond anticipation note to fund the cost of design and engineering. We are hiring for four firefighter positions at this time. Their civil service list has been published, and interviews have begun, so we're hoping they can get into an academy in February. Right now, myself and department heads are entering the budget planning portion of the year, and we'll be working on measuring the goals in '21, '22 that we've achieved strategic planning and capital planning for next year. And lastly, the software update, the utility billing software is anticipated to go online in January, with online bill pay to follow sometime in 2022. The project is still going very well. Tax collection software has been built and will launch, be ready to go in 2022 for tax collection, and the code enforcement inspection software should also be ready to go live in June or July of 2022. And those are the updates. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
John, and then Rosemary.
Two questions, Rachel. First of all, I think last time we talked about the naming rights for the ice rink. Where do we stand on that?
So we have proposals. We're due on Friday. We received proposals and will be reviewing them with, we have a committee of interested parties for the ice rink, so I thought it'd be best to review them with that committee. And that date is, next meeting is November 23, right before Thanksgiving. And then if they do come to a recommendation as a whole with myself and the assistant city manager, we would bring that forward to council, and that would be perfect timing to enter into an agreement in advance of the budget.
Second question, last meeting, I brought up my concern about the parking outside the stadium in the parking zone. Can I get an update on what we're doing there?
I can tell you, and I'll let the police chief weigh in as well, and the assistant city manager, that we have leadership meetings the Wednesday after every council meeting, so we brought it up and decided to authorize overtime for more parking enforcement from the parking enforcement officer, because as you are aware, Friday nights are busy for officers. So we have authorized that overtime. I don't, I'd ask for an update from the floor.
So the immediately following, which would have been a home football game, the parking enforcement officer was unable to work that night. He had a prior commitment, so we did have an officer stop out during his regular patrol, make the rounds, issued two parking tickets that night, but saw no other violations during the time that he was there. He got called away for other calls for service, priority calls, and we've had our officers making a focus on that. Obviously, they're in the division playoffs right now, so I don't know how many more home games they will have, but we will make sure that we spend.
Hold on, Rosemary next.
Rachel, why are we down three police officers?
Because they left for other jobs in other municipalities.
Why?
Potentially because of the money, the benefits, closer to their family. There's a multitude of reasons.
Mostly because of money?
There's a multitude of reasons why someone leaves employment.
What are the multiple reasons why they're leaving?
Well, definitely finances. Some departments give lifetime health care, which we're not in a position to do. Sometimes it's a different environment, so it's a town police department, not a city police department.
Well, my uncle at one time was a police officer, just like Gino, and at that time, they were all able to get their health insurance, and then within a few months, they all lost it. Now, what is the reason for that?
I historically don't know what negotiations or contracts took place before me, and I wouldn't speak on that.
Okay. So what are we doing to hire three police officers?
So we've combed the existing civil service list, and we've gotten to the very bottom of qualified candidates. In the last three months, we've hired one who we've put through training, and now we need to move to a new civil service list. The test was just given, and it will be published within this week or so. So once it's published, we can go on the list, we can go through the process of hiring, and then we have to find an academy to put the officers through. Then they have to do field training out in the field, and then they can be brought in as a, on their own, full-time officer.
So when we hire a police officer, what is their salary when we hire them?
I believe it's $56,000.
I believe the academy at three countries, $54,000.
So are there areas that are offering them more money?
It depends. I don't have the comparables with me. Some are lower, some cities of our comparable size are lower, and some are higher. But larger metropolitan police departments do offer more funds, like Buffalo and Rochester, in police and in fire, especially where they can have fire districts, which is an entirely separate way of taxing the community.
Well, since I'm not going to be here, you know, soon, I hope my colleagues will all think about giving them a raise to hire more policemen. I, you know, what?
It's a union situation.
Yeah, well, it is union, but the thing of it is, they do deserve it. I mean, there's no hiv, sands, and butts about it, and, you know...
I'm in agreement with you in that, if I can speak, I need your time, but I'm in agreement with you, but I think that's something, that's something that we as council would want to sit down with the city manager, look at the existing benefits and pay package that we're offering right now, do a comparison of that versus other communities of our size. Simply because, yes, if you're going to be in this, in the Buffalo City Police Department or Rochester City Police Department, they're going to earn more because of the situation that they're in. It's a completely different environment. But I would encourage us to sit down as a group and investigate what other communities of our size are paying their police departments, and then figure out maybe what some of the reasons are, look into the reasons as to why people have left in the past, and then find out where there might be some solutions to those, to those areas if there are solutions.
I agree with you, John, and the thing of it is, right now, and what I see out there, it's not improving, okay? It's getting terrible out there. And if you compare Buffalo and Rochester to Batavia, the majority of those people that are breaking the laws are coming from Buffalo and Rochester, okay? This damn bail reform is ridiculous, okay? And there's nothing we could do about that at this time, but we certainly can take care of our policemen. Thank you.
And we would, I would encourage us as a group to sit with the city manager.
You're right.
She's in charge of negotiations when the contract comes up, and then encourage her to work on certain areas. We might want to see change in the next...
Correct. Thank you.
One question, did any of these three individuals that left, were they within the threshold where we would recoup some of our training money back?
Yes, one of them was, and we have issued bills to the Town of Greece, which we are hoping that they will pay soon.
So you understand what I meant by that?
Uh huh.
So they get...
They had to stay.
If we train them, and they leave within a certain period of time, the agency they transfer to has to cover our expense for training them, to a point. So at least we recoup some of that back for future training.
Right.
Am I right, Sean? Why don't you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so the caveat to that is the officer must be hired as a lateral transfer. So if the officer is hired off of a civil service list, which each agency kind of has their own civil service list, so Monroe County establishes a list, Greece establishes a list, Erie County establishes a list, if those hired, those officers that transfer out are hired off a list, we cannot recoup that money because they're not being hired as a transfer candidate.
They're almost a new hire at that point.
Yeah, so we did, you know, and all three officers we've lost this year have been to transfers to other agencies for differing reasons. Obviously, some for pay and benefits, some to be closer to home, and some a combination of that, of all of those, right? So we did issue the one bill to the Town of Greece for one of the officers. We're awaiting resolution to that at this point in time. And the others, we were not able to recoup any money from because they were hired off of a civil service list in their jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, Sean, you can stay right there, and I discussed it with you or Rachel, I don't remember now, but I think between the two driveways, getting back to the parking at the stadium, between the two driveways going into the parking lot, there's one sign in the middle.
Excuse me.
And I think if you put up two more no-parking or standing signs, it might alleviate the problem, because you could pull in and say, well, gee, there's no parking there, not here.
Yeah, it's something we have to discuss with Ray from Bureau Maintenance to see what the regulations are and if there, if there's enough room to put those signs in there properly. That's Ray's department.
Parking tickets are immaterial.
This week, they're going to be in Pittsburgh, so they're not going to even be...
It's so hectic there when there's a football game.
In regards to that, is there any way, I thought the other night, is there any way that we could just, prior to the game, just put up cones along the road so people can't park them?
It just boils down to manpower and the ability to do it at that point in time.
Can the school resource officer do it prior to the event when she gets there?
So the school resource officer is tasked with the game itself and the crowd, so not necessarily the traffic.
I'm saying prior to the event, though, when she first gets there, can she put out the cones?
We'd have to look at the situation and see if there's time for her to do that and manage.
I don't want to see us go to a lot of additional expects, but I just thought, you know, if somebody that's covering that beat for the night could just cruise by every now and then, if they're, you know, if they're out and about, or if...
And the officers do. The officers make regular rounds. Yep.
I know she's, her concentration really needs to be inside the stadium.
Yeah, to be honest with you, the school's actually hired an additional officer for security purposes as well, so we do have two officers that are at the stadium for every home varsity football game at the school's request, and again, that, their attention is inward, not necessarily with the parking situation, just because they don't have the time.
I think their buildings and grounds people are there, though, during the games.
I have a solution. I think the councilman that lives on Union should take care of that.
There you go. There you go. We can appoint voluntary...
Which one? There's two of them.
Good, now the better.
No problem, but you're reading about it.
All right, are we done with that?
Two is better than one.
All right, thank you, Sean. Are you all good with city managers' report? No other questions?
Yes.
Committee reports?
I always have a committee report. Bid is having Christmas in the city on December 4. It will be 4:00 in the afternoon, starting at 6:00, there will be a parade, and they're looking for groups to be in that parade. That means us. Also, in keeping with that, they're having a wreath contest that is similar to the scarecrow contest, where there will be things hanging on poles. Anyone can do that if you're in another club or something. They can also put one in, and there are prizes for it. They are actually hoping to have Wi-Fi. They would love to have it by Christmas Eve, and they would be thrilled to have it downtown to help bring more people in. And the last part is Jackson Square. They're looking to have it done by June of 2022, which would mean for the next concert season, it would be lovely if the weather holds out and they can actually work on it.
Anyone else? Public comments? Any unfinished business? Okay, Resolution 81, 2021, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend and add fees to the City of Batavia fee schedule.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns?
I'd just like to comment, I spent an hour this afternoon with the assistant manager. We reviewed all these fees and all that, you clarified a lot of things, and it's more of a, an equalization because, like you got to explain it, some people are paying for other people for inspections and all that, so now the fee structure will be more commensurate with the time it takes to do the inspections, and also that, you know, with the new computer system coming online, Council President, you and I discussed it earlier, that, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous that they have to inspect something or note a violation, come back here, fill out the forms, go back out on the road, so there'll be a lot of changes, but a lot of it's good, and I think there'll be a lot more clarifications coming, and I'd just like to thank the assistant manager for spending the time today with me, and I think we clarified a lot of it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, myself, don't think this is the right time to do something like that because of the economy and inflation. I think it's going to hurt more people than it's going to do good for our city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just to reiterate, I think the computer's actually going to help the city, their new system become a lot more efficient, and like I said, most of the fees are in line with everything else, where some, some people may have been paying fees in the past, and now they won't even have to, but there's a lot of changes. It's all going to be tied in with state code, which the state code overrides everything as far as building and all that, so. And I agree with you, Rosemary, I'm, when it comes to charging people, I don't want to discourage anyone from maintaining their homes or keeping their homes up, but a lot of this stuff is commercial, which I didn't realize, and that's what the assistant managers clarified a lot of that, too.
Anyone else? Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vealy?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canale?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Okay, Resolution 82, 2021, Mr. Canale, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Town of Batavia to maintain 31 streetlights on Park Road.
Seconded by? Seconded by, Ms. Christian. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution 83, 2021, Ms. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Town of Batavia to maintain a traffic control device at Route 98 and Federal Drive.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Mr. Byakowski?
Yeah, I have a question. This concerns liability, seeing assistance outside the city limits, where we don't have any jurisdiction. This is a state highway. My concern is over traffic control and liability while they are maintaining or repairing a light.
So, the liability for workman's comp would be the same as if they were working inside of... Yeah, they'd be authorized to work under this agreement, so the worker's comp liability would be the same as if they were working on Main Street on a light. We actually do maintain lights for DOT on Main Street and other highways, and when you are maintaining a light, a lot of times, the work you're doing is at a control or junction box, so you're not physically up getting the light, or if you were, you'd stop traffic, bring the light down, work on it, and traffic control wouldn't be provided by the city at that time. It would be provided by the sheriffs or a town DPW-type entity.
That's what I wanted to hear. Yeah, okay.
So, they'd have to call in for proper law enforcement, traffic, I guess, traffic control.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 84, 2021, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to contact for public services with Genesee County.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canely?
Yes.
Resolution 85, 2021, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the budget by transferring funds from the contingency and reserve accounts.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 86, 2021, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to declare the power of Public Works vehicles and equipment surplus for the purpose of salvage and disposal.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yep.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Resolution 87, 2021, Mr. Canely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into a renewed role in roofing services for the police station flat roof replacement project and amend the fiscal year 21, '22 budget.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely. Anyone have questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 88, 2021, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to support the submission of a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIAA grant application, and undertake critical projects at the water treatment plant.
Seconded by, Mr. Canely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. And Resolution 89, 2021, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Genesee County to apply for a water infrastructure improvement grant.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay, if you would take us into executive session, please.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105.1E of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body, the municipality, to enter into executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, and whereas Article 7, Section 105.1F of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body, the municipality, to enter into executive discussion, session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, whereas Article 7, Section 105.1D of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body, the municipality, to enter into executive session to discuss proposed, pending, or current litigation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the City Council does hereby enter into executive session.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canely?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.